May I request all of you to please be seated. And keep all your mobile phone either on switch off or mode or silent mode. And request all the stakeholders to present the hearing. To raise their hand in case of any objections at the petition. And one by one. Can you maintain the form of the hearing please?
A very good morning to you all. Honorable member, Joint Electricity Committee Commission for the State of Goa and Indian Industries. Director Finance, Shalmasur, Vidya, various organizations, associations, justice. M L As and my dear consumers. My name is Stephen Fenadis, Chief Electrical Engineer. I am here on behalf of electricity department to present. The tariff petition which will include three things. Annual performance review for the financial year twenty twenty two twenty three. A R R, aggregate revenue requirement for the year twenty twenty three twenty four. And the tariff proposal for the year twenty three twenty four. We will include the following topics for the A P R and E R R. The big background, distribution losses for the electricity department for the state of Goa. The power purchase for the state of Goa. A P R and E R R along with the tariff proposal. As you all are aware for the clarity of all the stakeholders, a brief background. We all are aware that we are the only transmission and distribution licensee in the state of Goa. Goa does not have any of their co-generation and we entirely depend on the central allocation. Which majorly comes from N T P C and N P C I, almost seventy five percent along with the renewables. Goa is the only state which shares interstate line for the two regions. That is the western and the southern region. Goa means at a tail end of the western region, we have an added advantage that we have power from the southern region. Our peak demand, which was recorded was in the month of May, two thousand twenty two, that too after the Covid. Which shows there is a revival of economy and load as in face. It was recorded to seven fifty megawatt. And is met through various sources of N T P C, open market, short term market, renewables. And from C R C licensed traders. We have a peak allocation from the government of India, federal allocation, that is six twenty point zero eight megawatt. And off peak hour allocation of six twenty eight point two four megawatt for the various C G S central generating stations. I already explained, our major share is from the central generating station. Then we have small three co-generation plants in the state of Goa, supplied by Vedanta one, two. And one small sponge, Goa sponge, almost one point two megawatt. This is the list, over the western region, we can around four hundred eight point two eight megawatt. And southern region hundred, this is the firm allocation what the state of Goa is getting from the central government. Total, considering the allocated power, we have almost six twenty point zero eight megawatt of allocation from the central ministry. As I explained, we have small three plants, co-generation, power generated from the waste chip. Recovery, we normally say, that is Vedanta one. It varies from forty to twenty one based on their main plant, that is the peak plant. And based on the amount of gases, it varies only after their internal consumption is met. Whatever balance power is fed to the government of Goa. Vedanta two, two megawatt, is Goa sponge one megawatt. And thirty four megawatt is the co-generation, generation happening in Goa. Apart from that, we have R P O renewable power application. As given by the honorable commission to fulfill the obligation as well as to meet the national target. We have nine percent solar, we have nine percent non-solar. And we are small point three five percent for hydro, which is just starting from this year. So we have two power purchase agreement for solar. One is from Seki Solar Energy Corporation of India, that is twenty five megawatt. We have N T P C reduced Viper Nikam Limited, a subsidiary of N T P C, six megawatt for short term, five years. Then we get net meeting around thirty three point three four megawatt for the state of Goa. We have non-solar. Right now, we have three agreements. The first two are with the Seki Solar Energy Corporation of India, fifty megawatt into two. And we are small plant, which is normally operated on waste chip recovery. Which also comes under non-solar, that is one point five four megawatt. The balance power, since it is eighteen point three five percent, the total, what is required. We cannot meet too long term agreements. We buy power from short term market traders and from the porters. We have right now hundred megawatt of solar power for the short term management. And we have forty megawatt at non-solar as a part of short term power. Today's first topic is A P R Annual Performance Review for the year twenty 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 three. Again, these are the soft topics for the A P R for the current year twenty two twenty three. Some of the important parameters. Number of consumers count for this year is seven lakh three thousand nine hundred and four. We have a connected load of around three thousand two, two hundred forty eight megawatt. We have a sales of four thousand four hundred thirty five point eight one million units, this is for this current year, twenty two twenty three. Just I made a list to show the various percentage of consumers for the Goa. We have eighty percent of consumers which are giving us revenue of thirty point two nine percent. On the other side, if you see the industry, we have only one percent, if count is concerned. But they are almost giving fifty two percent of revenue. And we have other categories, we have commercial fifteen percent and rest around fifty to twenty percent. Already explained in the initial slide, total power purchase cost for this year is two thousand two hundred thirty point one nine crores. I'll explain the list from the various sources. For the total million units of four thousand nine hundred ninety eight point one nine, almost five thousand million units. This is the breakup, gross purchase, what was approved, the cost and the rate. Approved by the honorable commission in the tariff order, which came on thirty first March twenty twenty two. And this are the data provided in our petition. The basis of calculation for the annual performance review, we use the M Y T. Multi-year tariff regulation twenty twenty one to compute each and every parameter which is required for the computation of A P R. We have taken six month actual data from April to September. And the second half yearly data is been calculated on the projections and from the C J R, four year C H R value. The consumer count, the sales is projected based on the projections. By as the consumers, number of consumers connected load is been calculated based on four year C H R. And the various methods used in the regulations. The other expenses, oil and depreciation, interest, return on equity. The values which are part of the A P R and E R R are computed based on the regulations. The distribution loss for the state of Goa is eight point four five percent. We are lower than the approved values approved by the honorable commission. We have carried out various projects and a different base of in the S A P online. We have reduced these losses to eight point four five percent. This is the P G C I loss, the interstate lines from the generator which are located in a different part of our country. Like Madhya Pradesh, Satishgarh, Gujarat, Maharashtra. From there to Goa periphery is that these are the losses for the western region. There, what was approved was three point three four percent, but the southern region was seven point nine two percent. And our projection based on the actual data and the projection which are made for the next half yearly. They have two point eight nine percent and for the southern region it is six point nine seven percent. Based on the losses, our actual requirement at the periphery. We require four thousand eight hundred thirty nine point four seven million units against the approved four thousand seven hundred twenty six point three one. The Goa's demand and Goa's load has increased a lot after the Covid. A lot of infrastructure projects that come based on which we have given lot of load to the increased number of consumers. The net energy requirement at our Goa periphery is four thousand six hundred eighty one point zero eight. After selling the power, what we have excess during the off peak hours. This is the summary for the power procurement. So net power purchase cost is two thousand two hundred thirty point one nine crores, which I already explained in the initial slides. We go on merit order dispatch, based on the Goa's requirement, we schedule and we unschedule certain plans. Based on the requirement of load and Goa's demand. The various projects which have been carried out in Goa, the capitalization, the capital expenditure, what was approved was almost one thousand crores. We have revised it, we have submitted our petition, which comes to nine fifty point nine two crores as a capital expenditure. And the capitalization of four twenty two point eight nine crores will happen for this year. In this, some of the projects which have spilled over from two thousand nineteen, twenty and twenty one and twenty two. And we have taken a lot of efforts to complete, almost more than eight hundred crores, projects have been completed for this year. This is all the costs put together in this slide for the A P R twenty twenty two twenty three. Based on this, the total requirement, revenue requirement is two thousand eight hundred ninety three point four eight crores. Reducing it through non-tariff income, we get a net revenue requirement as two thousand eight hundred sixty four point one three crores. Now we have the second part of today's presentation, that is E R R, aggregate revenue requirement for the year twenty twenty three twenty four, the next financial year. These are the same subtopics which have already covered in the A P R, similar topics which are going to cover for the E R R. Again, the methodology used is J R C M Y T regulation twenty twenty one notified in March twenty twenty one. Our entire petition is based on these M Y T regulations. For the next year, the count of the consumers is seven lakh twenty six thousand eight hundred and fifteen. We have increased to three point two five percent over this year. The connected load, three thousand four hundred and twelve megawatt. The sale, four thousand five hundred sixty six point nine eight million units. Again, the breakup, it has only increased by three point two five percent. The similar data was given for A P R. Again, the power requirement met from the similar sources, what has been done for the previous years and this year. The total power purchase cost has won today, what we have calculated, is two thousand thirteen point nine four crores. Against two thousand two hundred thirty crores, what we have calculated for this current year. Now the, the reduction in power cost for the next year is basically last year we had a tough time. The international coal prices have increased and our country was going far away in the renewables. But renewables, as we all know, during peak hours, after six o'clock is a challenge. And last year we had gone through a two challenge of arranging power, March, April, May. Because of the coal crisis, there was a huge problem. Therefore, we had to get a foreign coal, which is much costly. The demand after Covid has increased like anything. Therefore, the cost in the market, the I X has gone twenty rupees per unit. Thanks to the honorable C R C who immediately acted and put a capping of twelve rupees per unit. But still the twelve rupees was quite high and therefore the power purchase cost, which is almost eighty percent of our cost. Has increased tremendously. This again the breakup, we are increased the units because the load has increased, the consumption has increased, the demand of Goa has increased. The rate only for power purchase cost is three rupees ninety percent. As of now, there is no overdrower planned, no short term power, no I X. But definitely I am sure with lot of projects in T V, Wanda and Verna. The major transformers going to be commissioned soon and we will increase because a lot of load is coming. Basically in the northern coastal belt and because of the Moppa new airport. Almost hundred and fifty megawatt load growth is going to be witnessed. Therefore, we may have to go for I X and short term power purchase. Again, the losses, eight point four five percent, what is we have put in our petition. As per the old order, they approved our ten percent. The interstate lines, the western region and the southern region, interstate losses is three point three one percent. And southern region is seven point eight five percent. If you take an average, it comes to three point five five percent for both the regions. The power from the western region has been almost eighty percent. Again, considering the losses, we will require a net energy requirement at our Goa periphery will be four thousand nine hundred eighty two. Against approved four thousand seven hundred twenty three. This is the power procurement recourse summary, including the R P O obligations. We will require five thousand one hundred fifty two point five seven million units. We have at our disposal around five thousand two hundred thirty three million units. If you look at today's data, we don't require any power from I X. But I would like to mention once again, we will definitely witness a huge load growth. And we may have to go for I X and short term power purchase also. The capital expenditure what is planned for the financial twenty three twenty four is one thousand three hundred sixty eight point five six crores. For this capitalization will happen for one thousand one hundred and eighteen point six nine crores. This is the big breakup of the different cost for the entire year twenty three twenty four. We will require total revenue required for the state of Goa would be two thousand seven hundred sixty four point one eight. This is what we have proposed in the tariff petition. What was approved in the tariff order, which was, which came in thirty first March twenty twenty two was two thousand five hundred sixty five point zero five crores. By reducing the non-tariff income, the net revenue what is required for the state of Goa is two thousand seven hundred thirty four point two five crores. This is the important slide which every consumer would like to know and for the clarification, I just try to detail it out. The net E R R what we require for the year twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, sorry, is two thousand seven hundred thirty four point two five crores. If we continue the same tariff, what is there for this year? We will get two thousand two hundred fifty point six zero crores. That means the gap with the existing tariff is four eighty three point six five crores. We have proposed six percent hike, overall is six percent hike. But if you see the hike for different categories, for different slab is different. But the overall average figure is six percent. By introducing a hike of six percent, we are going to get additional revenue of one thirty four crores. One thirty four point nine six, almost one thirty five crores additional revenue. Despite of increasing six percent overall tariff, still we will have a gap of three forty eight point six nine crores. That is going to be provided through budgetary support through government of Goa. Now, this one thirty four point nine six crores. How we are going to recover across different categories, the increase of per unit prices for various categories and various slabs. Is detailed out in the next slides. Again, for the clarification and the knowledge of consumers, two thousand eighteen nineteen tariff. We have maintained for the year nineteen twenty. There was a hike in twenty twenty one and twenty one twenty two. Vis a vis tariff order passed by the honorable commission. But due to Covid pandemic, government of Goa has maintained the tariff of two thousand eighteen nineteen. To be perfect, from two thousand nineteen twenty till twenty one twenty two, there was no tariff hike. Despite of the order of the honorable commission, only because of the pandemic. Government of Goa has borne the additional burden from the state. Only what we did is K V A is billing for H T consumers and E V charging station tariff was implemented for the year twenty one twenty two. As per the tariff order of the honorable commission for the year, financial year twenty one twenty two. Only last year, we have had a tariff rise of one point five eight percent. But everybody will say how it is one point five eight. The last year's tariff order was for one point five feet, but we have implemented the entire tariff, which was approved by the honorable commission for the previous years also. Past tariff hike trends for the knowledge of the consumers, eight years trend we have put on this slide. If you see from nineteen twenty till twenty one twenty two, there was no hike. Last year there was a hike of one point five feet percent approved by the honorable commission, which was implemented by the electricity department. This year we have proposed six percent hike, overall percentage hike for the entire revenue. I have already explained in the previous slides. There was a huge rise in power cost, especially in the coal, we had to use the blended coal from the foreign countries. There was a huge demand, therefore the prices in the market, I X had gone to twenty rupees. The intervention from the honorable C R C, there was a capping of twelve rupees, but all these three months, the price was twelve rupees constant in the market. And if you see the prices of N T P C, if you calculate for the April to September for the previous year, that is twenty one and twenty two. And this year, you can see the sharp rise in power cost. Two rupees sixty nine, it went to four rupees thirty three. In the month of May, three rupees forty seven, it went to three rupees fifty one. Like that, almost all the month, the price have increased. Because we are heavily dependent on the central allocation. And in fact, we are fortunate enough to have low cost tariff because of the old agreements what we have with the National Thermal Corporation of. Run by the government of India, N T P C Power Corporation. So therefore, there was almost thirty to forty percent increase in the cost. And therefore, the F P C feel that power purchase cost adjustment, which are normally negligible for many years. It was in the range of ten percent to fifty percent. There was sharp increase in this year because of the increase in coal prices. Which was approved by the honorable commission and implemented in the tariff. These are the various reasons why we have proposed for increase in tariff. The total cost power cost is around seventy five to eighty percent. And in that eighty percent of the cost, the rise in power is around thirty to forty percent. And therefore, we were forced to go for a hike in power tariff. This are detailed each and every slab. There are five slabs in domestic, zero zero hundred, hundred and one to two hundred, two hundred and one to three hundred, two hundred and one to four hundred. And the last slab is above four hundreds. There are two components, the fixed charges and the variable charges. The fixed charges from twenty rupees, we have proposed to increase to twenty rupees per kilowatt per month. The various price, price for difference, I mean from one point six to one point seven five, these are only the proposed. From two point three five to two rupees sixty, two point nine five to three point three, three point nine to four point four. And above four hundred units, we have proposed from four rupees fifty percent to five rupees ten percent. Once again, this is proposed. The second category, that is a low, L I G, low income group. We charge them twenty rupees per kilowatt per month, which we have increased by two rupees. For high tension domestic, we have only four domestic consumer in the state of Goa. The fixed charges were hundred and ten, we have proposed to increase it to one twenty five per K V A per month. And as a variable cost from four rupees sixty percent, we are proposed to increase to five rupees thirty percent. The next category is commercial, low tension commercial, L T C, what we basically call. There are four categories, how we have five categories in domestic. We have four categories in the commercial collecting, that is from zero to hundred, hundred and one to two hundred, and two hundred and one to four hundred units. The fixed charge where is based on the load, for consumers with load up to twenty kilowatt, they are charged forty rupees per kilowatt per month. And anything, anything above twenty kilowatt, which are sixty rupees per kilowatt per month. The variable charges have increased from three rupees fifty five to four, not increase, once again proposed. From three rupees fifty five to four rupees for the second slab. Four rupees thirty five to four rupees eighty five. For two hundred and one to four hundred units, we have proposed to increase from four rupees eighty five to five rupees fifty percent. And above four hundred units, we have proposed from five, existing five rupees twenty five to six rupees. The fixed cost we have proposed to increase from forty to forty five. And from sixty to seventy for load about twenty kilowatt. This is, this is here, high tension commercial for commercial and for industry. For all areas for commercial, it is two fifty rupees per K V A per month for the industries, all the commercial establishment, sorry. We have proposed to increase for two, two hundred and eighty five per K V A per month. The energy charge from five rupees twenty five to six rupees per unit. For the industrial, there are two slabs from zero to five hundred and above five hundred units. For the low tension, there is forty rupees per H P per month. And the variable charge is three rupees forty, which we have proposed to increase by ten percent, increase in ten percent, which comes to three rupees fifty. Above five hundred units also, we have proposed ten percent, that is from three rupees ninety five to four rupees zero. Above five hundred units also, we have proposed ten percent, that is from three rupees ninety five to four rupees zero percent. Then comes low tension mixed H T P hotel industry. We have fixed charges of fifty rupees per kilowatt per month. And a variable charge of five rupees twenty five, which we have proposed to five rupees sixty. For H T, high tension industrial. Which are connected at eleven K B thirty three K B. They have a one fixed cost, that is two fifty per K V A per month. And the variable cost of four rupees eighty percent, which we intend to increase by two rupees, sorry, to hundred fifty five per K V A per month. And the variable charge from four rupees eighty to four rupees ninety percent. We have a different tariff for consumers which are connected at hundred and ten K B. We have seven numbers of hundred and ten K B consumers. For them, the fixed cost charges presently are two fifty per K V A per month. And the variable cost is four rupees seventy fifty percent, which we have proposed to increase to four rupees eighty percent. High tension ferro. Still rolling. The fixed charges, two fifty per K V A per month. And the variable charge is four rupees eighty percent. We have proposed to increase the fixed cost to two fifty five, increase of five rupees per K V A. And for the variable cost. From four eighty to four ninety, ten percent per unit. This is for low tension agriculture and agriculture pumps. For all units, it was eighteen rupees per H P per month. The variable cost is one rupees fifty. We have proposed for fixed cost by two rupees, that is eighteen to twenty. And for variable cost from one point fifty to one point sixty, ten percent. For allied activities, agriculture allied activities, we have proposed to increase by twenty five percent. And the fixed cost by three rupees. Sorry, it is two rupees, from twenty five to twenty seven. Then comes the high tension. Agriculture and high tension agriculture pump sets. Then also we have increased by two rupees, the fixed cost, that is from forty per K V A per month to forty two rupees K V A per month. The fixed cost, variable cost, we have proposed by ten percent, from one sixty to one seventy. And for high tension H T and allied activities, we have proposed to have an increase of seven rupees in fixed cost. That is from seventy per K V A per month to seventy seven per K V A per month. And the variable cost from one rupee ninety five percent to two rupees fifty percent, an increase of twenty percent. This is for M E S, military engineering services and defense establishments. The fixed cost, we have kept it same, two hundred rupees per K V A per month. The variable cost also is proposed to remain same, four rupees ninety percent. Public lighting, we have proposed increase. For seventeen per kilowatt per month to seventy two, by two rupees. For variable cost from five rupees sixty five to five rupees eighty by fifty percent. Holdings and sign boards. On the fixed cost, we have increased by seven rupees. And for the variable cost, we have increased one rupee from ten rupees to eleven rupees. The entity temporary, domestic, commercial and all temporary. The methodology of calculation will remain same, that is one point five times the existing tariff of the various categories. Single point supply. Residential complexes, commercial complexes, industrial complexes. We have increased the fixed cost from hundred and ten to hundred and twenty. For commercial complexes, two twenty to two forty. And for industrial complexes, from two twenty to two forty. This is the fixed cost, the variable cost from three rupees fifty for the residential complexes to three rupees ninety percent. For commercial complexes, the variable cost will be proposed to increase from four eighty to five thirty. And for industrial complexes, it is proposed for four forty to four ninety. Electrical vehicle charging station. To assist and to have more electrical vehicle charging, the tariff for very low, three rupees fifty, they did not have any fixed charges. We have proposed to increase by twenty percent. Important measures taken by the Lexi department. We started out different projects like installation of transformers which were pending at T V. The load was increasing like anything in the coastal belt. We have almost on the final commissioning of the sixty three M B transformer at T V. We have already given an order which is going to soon be commissioned at Ponda sixty three M B and at Werna fifty M B. These are the major projects at three E H P substations. Which will fulfill the requirement of the consumers, especially the industries which are facing power issues. Whenever there was any issues, maybe in terms of coal or in terms of demand. The industry consumers were affected, which is going to get solved by way of these three transformers. There are various projects of converting from overhead to underground. We have replaced lot of overhead conductors to H T R S conductors. We have replaced the old conductors to new conductors. We have replaced lot of transformers with energy efficient transformers. We have replaced lot of infrastructure. And therefore, we have reduced the losses also the R M distribution sector scheme. Which government of India has introduced. To bring down the losses and to get modernization and having the infrastructure, a robust infrastructure which will improve. The efficiency, operational efficiency and the financial viability of the distribution sector. These are the various projects like transformers, converted, conversion from overhead lines to underground cabling. Like some of the project, we have done the major projects of one twenty crores at Mapsa town.